This time we'll hear from the public comments. In opposition to the recommended action, we have Michael Cosmell.
Good evening Mayor Ferry and members of the city council. My name is Michael Cosmell and I live on Deputy Jake Drive in the 53 home development known as Hidden Knoll which borders the land where Masters College intends to build the new residential units. I represented our HOA during numerous planning commission meetings and on several occasions I met with city staff as well as representatives from Masters College. While I do acknowledge the applicant's generosity in revising their master plan, I must inform you that my neighbors and I are less than enthusiastic about the project. The reason is simple. We will suffer many negative consequences while receiving little or no benefits. Most importantly, we will be forced to endure years of noise, dust, and the eyesores of construction site less than 50 feet from our homes. Furthermore, the scenic views we enjoy will be severely diminished. This project will certainly change the character of our neighborhood for at least five years, probably more, until all the new homes have been built and the new landscaping has had a chance to fill in. If we can magically snap our fingers today and by tomorrow everything was finished, then there would be no need to have this conversation. But the reality is that there are still many uncertainties about this project. To my knowledge, a home builder has not yet been selected and with such turbulence in the real estate market and the economy in general, who's to say what unexpected problems or delays this project will face? What happens if the college sells the plan to a less caring developer? What if there are delays during construction? One of our biggest fears is that the land gets graded but construction gets delayed. That will leave us next to a huge vacant lot instead of the existing scenic ridge line. Does this plan really guarantee such things won't happen? What assurances do we have that this project will proceed smoothly when faced with unforeseen problems outside the control of the city or the college? There are very real possibilities that our neighborhood will suffer even longer if these concerns are not addressed. We appreciate the goals of the Masters College and we sincerely hope it succeeds in its mission. However, the impacts caused by this project will, without a doubt, lessen our quality of life for many years to come. All I ask is for you to imagine yourselves as residents of Hidden Knoll and how your families and neighbors would feel if this plan was proposed to you. Please consider this when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosmell. We'll now hear from former council member Tim Ben Boitston followed by, in support of Valerie Thomas and Chris Townsley.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Mr. City Manager, Happy New Year. And it's good to be back in the saddle again. I am Tim Ben Boitston, former city councilman, a member of Santa Clarita and speaking as an individual citizen of Santa Clarita. And I watched the process of the Masters College master plan expansion with great interest both while I was on the council and after I got off. And I have to say that although there are a few things that need to be addressed, I'm sure that you will look into this evening, I would just like to point out to, not just to the council and the public, but also those who are in the process of looking to develop in Santa Clarita City, the difference between the process in which you are going through now and the one which we just completed. It is important to notice that the gentlemen at the college met and did arrangements and worked very hard with all of the neighborhoods there to try to address all their issues. If only were true that all of the developers were that responsible in our valley, I think we'd have much shorter meetings and we'd be all much happier at the end. So my congratulations to them and I know the council will do a good job in addressing the few remaining issues. And may this be an example as we go forward of the kind of development that we can look up to and look forward to where most of the addresses, most of the issues are addressed for most of the citizens. So, thank you and thank you for your continued work to, with the citizens and their neighborhoods, gentlemen.
Thank you. Valerie Thomas representing the Placerita Canyon Property Owners Association followed by Chris Townsley.
Good evening Mayor Ferry, city council. I think many of you who have been on the council for any length of time will acknowledge that you have just witnessed a miracle. PCPOA is here speaking on behalf of the college plan.
(laughing) So true.
Indeed, Mr. Armstrong, Bob Hotten, a number of staff members at the college have worked diligently with PCPOA over many years and have addressed our concerns. I'm delighted to hear that they have addressed with equal fervor the concerns of Hidden Knolls and the concerns of the people living along Dockweiler. This is the process that should happen in this community where the groups sit down and bang heads together and then staff gets involved as far as the technicalities are concerned. But it's got to work for the majority of the people or the process simply doesn't work. And Masters College, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsley.
Good evening Mayor and city council members. My name is Chris Townsley. I'm a relative newcomer to Placerita Canyon. I've only lived there 16 years. And there are many people here that have lived there much longer than I and I'd like to wholeheartedly support this project. I have been one of the people that have been working in the community to try to get us to this point. I was at one time a member of PCPOA board and we, we did not always agree with the college. We had our differences. It wasn't always smooth sailing as I know Dick Mayhew will agree. But we did sit down and we talked about our differences, we identified them, and we worked together. And now we have, we have a three W situation. We have a win for the Masters College. We have a win for the immediate neighborhood which includes Placerita Canyon, Hidden Knolls, the Vista condominiums, and we have a win for this entire city. We're gonna win in terms of Masters College being, helping us to redevelop New Hall because there will be integration in that regard as well. So I would like to compliment everybody for getting us to this point. And I stated that if we got to this point that I would be up here speaking in front of you and wholeheartedly recommending that you approve it and that's why I'm here this evening. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Mr. Armstrong, need to rebuttal for anything you've heard? Nope. At this time we'll close the public hearing. Council, any questions, comments for staff? Mr. Chow? Councilman Keller?
Somebody's gotta lead off, right?
Yeah.
My comments will be rather brief. I also reflect back over the years and, and aware that there has been some neighborhood issues having to do with the expansion in the plans of the Masters College. I can't tell you how impressed I am that the community was given the opportunity to the level that Masters College has provided to be a part of this planning process. I, clearly there's been extensive work and cooperation. Clearly there's been tremendous input by our city staff. You've gone through the planning process, planning commission. I've read the material and I will be first to tell you. I would love to be some kind of a rocket scientist here and tell you, "Oh, you need to do this or do that." I think you have got an absolute incredible plan here. And I see it, and Mr. Townsley, perfect words. Three-way win for Masters College, for the Placerita Homeowners Association, and for this community. And I just, other than just to compliment everybody and thank them for their hard work, I'm very excited about your plan. And moreover, having the opportunity to visit the campus as I know we all have on occasion, I can't tell you what an asset having Masters College in the city of Santa Clarita is. What a great, great institution of learning to have here in this community. And sir, you were right when you mentioned about working to be a good community partner. You are a good community partner. This college has done an extensive, incredible service for this community in so many areas. And when the time comes, I'd like to be the guy to make the motion to approve this master plan so that these folks can go forward. I'll wait till others have their comments.
Brenda?
I wanna echo what council member Keller said and really just add that when you look at the aerial view in the picture, you understand partly why it's called the Masters College. He's got a nice view up there of your, your plan. And, and one of the things that really kind of brushed over, in addition to expanding this school to include more students, we're creating a lot of jobs here, not just construction jobs, but I think it was over 160 staff and teaching jobs. What a wonderful opportunity in a time where jobs are so important. And I have a hunch, knowing a lot of teachers that have graduated from the Masters College, they may go on to go back and teach there too in some of those open positions which would be pretty great. It, it looks, it looks wonderful. I'm excited about the opportunities for us with Creekview Park. I know we've been talking about that for a while and that's a place where we, we really need to put some attention and hopefully at some point some money and, and try to improve that. I think it's wonderful that we'll have the trail connection between the community center and, and the park and that will provide a lot of opportunities for our staff at the community center too, to use that. I'm excited for this and I, I really commend staff for working so hard on this and more than anything, to the Placerita people and to the, the college people, it's a textbook example of, of what we need to do. And I think we need, as a community, to look at this as we go forward with other projects and let this be a lesson to other developers and consultants and land use experts. This is how you do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Proton West?
I think Marcia would like to go next.
Sure. Councilmember McLean?
Sure. I'll, I'll go ahead. I'm one of those people that, that probably look at things harder than, than I probably need to. But I went back and looked at all the planning commission meetings from the beginning to the end because I always like to get a feel of what the, the people around the project And the project that it started out to be is definitely not as good as the project that it turned out to be. There are some concerns that I have though and some questions. I'm wondering what is the timeline between when you're going to start grading because I, I understand, I also went out to the site to take a look and understand that the grading for the road and the project is going to be done first. And I'm wondering how long it's going to be between the grading and when the planting is going to be done in order to shield the Dockweiler extension on that ridge line. When, when you looked at the simulation, I wasn't real crazy about how it looked. It, and I know that it was mentioned about the slopes and, and the word manufactured slopes was used. Ever since I've been on this council, I have asked for any project that has had any impact on any slopes that they be natural or contoured. And in, in the conditions of approval, I would like it to state that any slope will be contoured and not manufactured. Many times when you look at simulations, like at River Park, we all looked at the simulations and they were gorgeous. And then when the project was built, like right now, it's not so gorgeous. And I, and I'm wondering what happens between the simulations and, and the actual reality? I would like to make sure that we are looking at the aesthetics of, of the landscaping and not allowing it to look pretty on the pictures but not look so pretty once you start grading. So I'm interested in a timeline and I don't know who could answer that but I'd really appreciate it. The water tanks, there's one big one and one smaller one and I understand the one little one is going to be taken down and there's going to be another huge one put up there. Well, the aesthetics from above and from Placerita are really nice, but when you get down to Market Street and into Old Town New Hall and you look up there off of New Hall Avenue, it's not so pretty. And, and I don't think the college is going to be responsible for, for it, but we need to have some kind of screening green from those huge, huge water tanks and, and I don't know if we need to talk to New Hall Water District about that or if that's something that we can ask the college to deal with or not, but I'm concerned about that. The other one is, is the dormitory that was built in 2001 before I was on the council. It's on top of a ridge line and there's nothing to shield it from down below. It's, you just see it. And I don't know if we can ask for some landscaping to, to help screen that. Also on the water tanks, Paul used a great word. He's, because of the, the pump that's going to have to be up there, sound attenuation. I'd like to make sure that when that water tank is expanded and they have to expand the water pump that, that we're not going to be hearing this whine all over the valley coming from that because that's up high and I want to make sure that we take care of that. So I'd like to have something on that included in, in the conditions of approval as well. And once again, I don't know if that's the college's responsibility or if we can place that onto New Hall Water District, but somebody's gotta take care of that because those things are noisy and they, they, they're not a pleasant sound especially at night. I know there was a lot of talk and a lot of conversation about the college is not going to be terribly adversely impacting Dockweiler. But when we build Dockweiler through to Lyons with the New Halls, we're going to have to deal with that. And I know the people were very concerned because it's proposed as, as what is it, a 94-foot road? It is now 63 and where is the other footage going to come from? And when we build the median on the portion of the road that we're building now, I would like to suggest that it be narrower so that when you hook it up and need to expand Dockweiler where people actually live, you might be able to narrow that median and not have to build so close to people's homes and patios. Because I know that was a huge concern. Those people weren't here tonight, but I know they're very much concerned with that as years down the road when, when Dockweiler does finally go all the way through. Also, I don't know if it was mentioned, I know during the planning session, it was mentioned about some permeable paving for the parking lots to, to allow the, the water to seep down in. And on the 10% modifications that staff would be allowed to do without any planning commission or council review, what types of modifications does that include exactly? And those are my questions.
Are we going to wait to answer Councilwoman McLean's questions?
Well, why don't we, yeah, why don't we get her questions answered so we don't have to come back? The shielding for Dockweiler, is that an issue for you guys? Yeah, why don't you go? Why don't we just go down the list and see which ones you guys are okay with? She said regarding the timeline grading for planning shielding Dockweiler?
As regards Dockweiler and the site grading, it's anticipated that the site grading would take one basically dry season, not that we have such a thing right now. But if you assumed a, a typical grading season starting from a spring, you know, a six-month period, per the tentative track map conditions, it already does address that, that a matting or an acceptable surface has to put, be put down and then we have to plant immediately. So those slopes have to be planted, not just the trees, the mitigation oaks and the other trees which would likely be sycamores and a number of the other things. And then other, either a combination of hydras seeds and planted, you know, pot-planted mixes would be put in. We've met with the city arborist and the city landscape architects as well, consultants, and working on something that we believe is a better solution than what's been done in the past. If you look at, candidly, when you look at a lot of manufactured slopes, they're cut in, they're compacted, and you wind up with basically rainbirds spraying across and not really getting anything wet. What's being proposed, both by our landscape architects and by the city as well, is that we would be using direct drip emitters on the pot plants and the trees as well. So what you wind up with is you get better coverage and a quicker establishment of ground cover and a higher success rate with trees. And I'm sure that your staff could further expand on that if they wanted to. So the college would be planting those during, immediately at the end of grading, those would go in.
I'm wondering, will the trees go above the ridge line so that you actually see trees or are there, is, is it going to be flat at the top?
Oh, I see. There would be street trees at Dockweiler. So in other words, as with any, you know, collector arterial roadway in the public right-of-way, there will be street trees, I believe they're 40 feet on centers, on the actual flat parkway on the, you know, on the road. And then additionally, as you start down the slope, mitigation oaks and other trees would be in sweeps or canopies that would be above the ridge line as well from the beginning. So they wouldn't just be down on the slope.
Okay. And that's a for certain thing?
Yes, it is.
That's, that's okay.
And I'm certain staff will, it'll, it'll be seared in my memory as we go through the further landscape plans and staff I'm sure will not forget either.
Well, I've found from experience that unless I insist that it be in writing before this is approved, that sometimes it kinds of falls through.
Yeah, we understand.
I saw you shake your head. You're okay landscaping and shielding the dormitory, correct?
Yes, the dormitory is also would be included.
I saw you shake your head that you're gonna do something to screen the water tanks.
Uh, no, I did not shake my head on the water tank.
That was just a listening shake.
Yeah, that was just a twitch, probably.
Is that under your discretion or is that the discretion of the water?
It's at the water district. If I can just kinda give a little history on this, we actually...
You don't have to give too long.
Okay, I'll go real quickly. So, basically, we had the EIR out for public, or basically the notice of preparation out, James, I believe, on it. And the water district said, gee, we wanna do a tank while you're doing an EIR up there. Why don't we pile onto your EIR instead of doing our own? That's my phrase, pile on. But we went ahead and re-noticed the EIR to include the water tank. So I consider the construction of the tank is their item and also how they screen their tanks is their issue.
Okay. But how do we tonight, how do we tonight, before we approve this, make sure that we're able to do something?
Equidocumen, by condition?
But isn't that a condition?
Okay.
Okay. That will include the minimizing of the whining of the tank, that'll include the watershed, the permeable asphalt?
We have, we have some green features in the master plan and that's one, that's part of a palette of things that can be considered where appropriate. We have to deal with, they're possible in some cases, but we also have regional water board which sometimes some things run counter to what they will allow when you actually get down to doing it. So we'll, it's, it will be in a consideration as we go through it.
And the other one was the Dockweiler road expansion, square footage, medium width?
We're open to whatever staff wants to work out on that as we work ahead.
Okay. And the final was 10% modification. I assume we don't know until it happens.
I defer to staff.
It's a, it would be a 10% reduction, not an increase.
10% reduction of what?
The density, James?
Of square footage. And for example, the, the classroom building as a part of the master plan would be approved at 60,000 square feet. If they chose not to build to that 60,000 square feet, that would be considered a minor modification.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm talking about is a modification where they come to you and say, "Well, gosh, we really don't want to do permeable paving. Gosh, we really don't want to do this with the slopes right now." I mean, is that something that staff would then say? Because I, too many times it's just disappeared. We, we want something and then it disappears.
The master plan also allows the director of community development at any time at his or her discretion to, to pull that item and present it before the planning commission and/or city council. So any...
I know, but you, you guys didn't tell me what, if, if what I've mentioned would be within that purview where they could change their minds on landscaping? Is that 10% modification? They could change their minds on permeable paving? You know, the New Hall Water District can say, "Well, we don't really wanna to shield those, those tanks." Is that 10%?
That, that isn't included. Well, anything that you've mentioned isn't identified in the master plan as being, as being something that would qualify as a 10% reduction. I believe additional 10% modifications include building transfers, height, building height reduction, to name a few.
Right. Councilwoman McLean, may I give you a full list here? It has to be a, changes considered minor that include phasing adjustments, height reductions, building, square footage, transfers, landscape modifications.
Well, there's your landscape modifications.
If you want, we can take out landscape modifications.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Councilmember West?
Thank you. I have some questions for staff. So I'd like to address those first and then I have a couple of things for the college. On the downlighting, so as to, because you do have a lot of impact because of the height of the project, is the lighting, the downlighting, is it musco lighting or equivalent quality to musco lighting? And, and has there been some light study done to make sure that you, throughout the campus, we're using downlighting so as to not impact the night sky? This does sit right on top of Old Town and we're trying to create an atmosphere. And I do wanna, right before I get started, I wanna thank the college. You, you have been most gracious and the community has worked very hard and I wanna thank the staff for spending so much time on this. So that's the lighting issue. Regarding architecture, very nice California Craftsman style architecture I see for the chapel. My question to staff, are we bringing this nice California Craftsman style throughout the campus as dormitories are built and the housing tract, the quality of the architecture and the housing tract? How will all of that integrate as the Craftsman style was one of the architectural historic styles for downtown New Hall? So are we integrating that throughout the campus and making sure that we're, make sure that quality is there and there's a continuity of architecture for the built-out of this college? So that's a question. And I see Lacey shaking her head. She will address it. On the oak trees, I, I see we're planting a lot of oak trees back and I'm assuming, but my question with the oak trees is, are we planting them back in, in quadrants so that they will naturalize and create canopy? Or you're just popping trees in? I mean, there's a lot of ways of planting oaks and are we putting them into near the, through the slopes and the park and the open space and areas so that they become very natural looking and that they can, over a long period of time, create habitat and, and real nice canopy interconnecting together for the college? That's a question probably for your arborist, but I'd like more detail on how you're planting. As far as the roadway goes with the trees, at this point you look up and as Councilwoman McLean put it, you see the, the dormitory. When that came before the council, I recall they were told they would never see the dormitory. So tree planting becomes really paramount in how you buffer, not only for noise and lighting, but just for basic good visual, which is, which is a nice amenity, not only for the college and the, the homes that are there, but also for the Old Town. So I'm not convinced yet that we have enough hedging and trees along the roadway in order to really buffer that roadway and its future impacts. And I think that really needs to be looked at a little stronger. You're just talking about planting trees. You already have the water lines there and you really wanna make sure that you're planting different heights of trees and different styles of trees and potentially some hedging so that you reduce noise, you reduce, reduce lighting impacts and you have visually complemented the area both from the college side and from the Old Town side. So I'd like to have some response on that and maybe the college could comment off, they're good with that. On the permeable paving, just would like to put in that generally speaking, it is considered very environmental to do as much permeable paving. Concrete that's permeable now is, is quite well-used and when you have large parking areas... And when you have large parking areas, especially when you're near a creek, it would be very beneficial to have some of that as much as could be possible for the college to do. Another question for staff, on the trail improvements, are you putting in a full-width Class I along Dockweiler and the roads and to eventually allow the college to be tied in a trail system that the whole community and the college can integrate into the major system? That's another question. And then I want to, I want to talk a little bit about with the college. The chapel is just stunning. It, it is just a stunning chapel. I've been to a lot of the performances over the years at the college, and they are truly some of the most amazing and talented performances I have ever seen anywhere. The chapel actually kind of rivals the Performing Arts Center. It's bigger, it's, it's just an amazing facility. But it, it does beg the question of the fact that there's a lot of connectivity between Masters College and the, and the renewal of old New Hall. And we do have a great community center that we hope the college students will be accessing and using. And, and I'm wondering if there isn't a way to do some kind of an agreement between the city and the college that would be beneficial for both, for the use of the chapel for some community opportunities. I mean, we have the Cowboy Festival, prayer breakfast. We have, we have some different events that could potentially, family things that could culturally be so beneficial for the community and allow the community a greater respect and access and appreciation for the amenity they have with the college. So, I, I like to ask the city and the college to do some work together to talk about some use of, of an opportunity for some events to be at the college. I really like people to get to know the campus better and get to know the amazing talent and the, and the wonderful opportunities that are at the school, as well as some of us know. Those are my things. So if staff can answer my questions, and then maybe the college wants to chime in on a couple of things.
Want to make those, down, downlighting, night sky, New Hall, that's your first one? Trying to keep this rolling, man.
There you go. Great, thank you.
Downlighting for the night sky.
Yeah, the reference was to Musco or equivalent, a certain, which is a brand name I'm familiar with, of, of a lighting type. The campus lighting in the master plan identifies different zones, very low-light zones in the canyon floor with low lights, and they do have cutoffs defined and voltages. And I believe that'll be, that'll be specified throughout as, as the plans, as any time plans go through, they'll be reviewed through that grid, I would believe, by staff. And that's the intent of the college as well, to keep low lighting. And we'll certainly hear from our neighbors at PCPOA when they're not low voltage lights, and they'll wave the master plan at us.
You might be hearing from the other side.
That's true. There are people on both sides. That's right.
The oak tree planting in relation to developing canopies?
Yes. Actually, if, I won't refer to it, but I'll let you refer to this at your leisure. The three pages that were included, the full-size oak tree mitigation planting plan, you'll notice that on particularly areas where there are good, healthy stands of trees with voids in them now, particularly east of the church, Placerita Baptist, is that it? The one that's just off campus? You know, you know where the, along the little houses that the school has along there? There's some voids and areas in that. Those areas will be planted with large, sometimes up to 96-inch box trees in there. So you'll be getting large mature trees to reinforce those stands and to increase those. And additionally, anywhere where at the toe of a slope area where there's a natural place for oaks to grow, they're being enhanced and, and pushed up in those areas. And so it's not just random oaks stuck on the slope to fit a fire code minimum or maximum or something. Additionally, on the backside, what we'd call it over on the, the New Hall Creek side, where there are heritage oaks that are being preserved, there will be increased plantings where possible, but not in the MWD transmission corridor, because they won't allow.
No, they won't.
Things. They won't allow mitigation oaks that could have to be torn out later. So I hope that answers that one.
The view shed from downtown New Hall, so you won't see the dormitory?
I, again, I think that the planting that we proposed doing from the earlier comments would address that. I think addition.
And the acceptability of that will be that of the city manager. So if the city manager deems it's not right, he'll be able to work with you to say, that's not what our intent was.
Okay. College? That sounds acceptable to the college.
Okay. The permeable paving?
Permeable paving, again, where possible and where acceptable under all of the water quality rules that we do have to live with and those different agendas. We'll try to work those into the new parking lot particularly. We're actually removing some parking lots and creating new lawns where there's now parking lots as well.
That may be a real blessing for the opportunities for the students, so.
Yeah, exactly. It's a good, good central place.
The Class I trail?
I refer to staff on that. I know that I've seen one condition that talks about an eight-foot trail, and I think some are 12-foot. So, James can address that.
That was a question related to Dockweiler Drive. Is that?
Yeah, your Craftsman bike trail.
That, that is designed to be an on-street Class II bike lane.
You, you want the students to ride on a Class II on the street? There's no opportunity for a Class I?
I think Mr. Chow wants Mr. Newman to come up to the microphone. That's the look of somebody coming up that has a class D trail.
I think that would be really important to do.
I would say for the most part, the students linkage won't be too much going up Dockweiler, back up to the top of the hill. That's going to be a pretty hefty mountain biking ride on that. The primary route will be using the trail and under tunnel, the tunnel under, you know, to connect back to town.
That's an eustrian hiking trail. It's not a bicycle trail.
Right.
Okay. Can we talk a little bit, Frank, about?
Right. Let's, I think city staff's gonna, oh, the only other issue that you have before city staff comes up would be the chapel, community usage you brought up.
Well, I think one other as well, as I'm hearing, hearing from the staff, is the architecture issue. And the college and the, the plan will be to incorporate the Craftsman architecture style reflective and consistent with what you're seeing in the chapel in all new buildings on the campus. And we will integrate that as well with the residential component when it comes forward.
Is that a condition?
We have no problem with that. Whatever, well, it's, it's, it's in the master plan, and it defines it by those that are acceptable within the special standards district. And we chose the Craftsman as being the predominant one that we'd like as a unified.
I just want to make sure it's a follow-through for continuity.
Yes. So I think that addresses that. The other one had to do with.
Other one, she wrote the chapel.
About the chapel. Yeah, the chapel will be a terrific facility. It's proposed to have, you know, fixed theater seats in it and probably about 1,500 seats. And the college would be, and that would be so that it could address all students in chapel together at one time. And the college would be more than happy to talk to the city as the future goes on about how to do that. I think it's beyond the scope of the sequodocument probably tonight to address specific things like that, I think.
Well, I, I'm not interested in sequel. I'm just interested in it being a condition that the city and the school work out something so that there's an opportunity for that. As you're talking about an amazing opportunity for the college.
Yeah, I agree.
And the Old Town in the future. So if we could have that dialogue between the school and, and the city staff.
I guess speaking for, I, I agree, there should be a dialogue. We should look at the opportunities.
Yeah.
I will speak, and I guess it's a sensitivity why I see you guys shaking your head. No, as the principal of a Catholic high school, we would never allow certain uses in our chapel.
No, you have, they have to decide what uses.
That's what I'm saying. So I know they're hesitant now without going back to their leadership to say what their house of worship's going to be. So I see them shaking their head. I know that's why. So I know you're open to the discussion without.
Exactly.
Quantifying what that is.
Yeah, as long as they have a discussion.
Probably not Oktoberfest.
Okay.
There you go.
Don't think that would pass most.
Thanks for taking that one.
Rest of mine's.
All right.
Mayor, before he leaves, I just have one more question. To address Mr. Cosnall, I think that was his name, regarding when you would be grading for the residential portion, and what is the timeline between, would you be grading right away between, you know, or would you wait until you actually were going to be ready to build those 42 units?
Thank you. That actually, the grading will have to all be done at once. So in other words, the, what I'd call, it's small, but I'd call it the super pad for the residential would all be done at the same time. The campus pad was being done, and Dockweiler and the manuf, you know, the slopes were being built and everything else would all be done. And the conditions state that any pads that aren't being used immediately, that don't immediately go into construction, have to be hydra-seated with, and maintained in a, you know, in a acceptable manner. So it can't be a dust field, which I know you've seen a lot of developers leaving you dirt fields everywhere right now. But the conditions here state that the college, who will be left behind with all of this, will be there having to make sure that even for their future buildings, that the campus buildings that they don't build yet, those pads have to be hydra-seated. So they have to be, that'll be dealt with. So I hope that addresses it.
Well, I, I just know that at the November 4 meeting, when, when Mr. Cosnall spoke, he said there's going to be impacts, but he was satisfied with, with the mitigations and such. So I'm, I'm interested to know what happened between then. I mean, are you speaking with him to try, during the construction, I mean, and such, to try and make things more comfortable for those homeowners?
The college certainly will. I mean, first of all, the mitigation oaks would go in at the very early stage, as soon as the grading was done. That would be adjacent, provide them screening. We also talked about mixing sycamores in there as well, so they'd have a mixed kind of canopy screen that would be in there. And then the slope landscaping would have to go in immediately. And then whatever pad was left next to them would have to be hydra-seated and maintained to an acceptable standard until the homes were built. I can't say when the hounds would be built, but I would say that, that we will use all good faith efforts to make sure that we have lived up to every condition and that we've reduced dust as quickly as possible and noise and any other issues.
Because when we were out today, or yesterday, I was told that actually those homes are going to be lower than the existing ones, so that.
Correct.
Is that, and that's correct?
Correct.
So they're not going to be like, just right next to them. They're going to be a little lower.
Yeah, they're lower than them, and they're separated by some distance. Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The only outstanding issue, believe, we have is the trail classification. So, staff?
I still have a question for staff on roadway, roadway landscaping.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Rick Gould. I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. My conversations with staff have been that the Class II bicycle trail connection was studied as the preferred alternative due to the Class II bike trail existing on Dockweiler Drive to the east. So, in other words, transitioning from a Class II to a Class I in this section didn't make any sense, and we continued the class through to that area. I am unaware whether there is available width in the existing plans to add a Class I.
Well, I, I'd just like to say that a bad plan shouldn't continuously be a bad plan just because somebody made a mistake 25 years ago. When you put young people on bicycles and they're mixing with cars going 60 miles an hour, it isn't a good mix. And to continue that, even if you were to convert to a wider sidewalk where you would allow, which, which we have in many instances around the city, accessibility for bikes in the future, if somebody wants to ride on the street, certainly they're prerogative. But I see near misses all the time, and it would seem that, you know, coming through there and coming down to a college, it, it would be important to, to make them as safe as possible and to give that amenity the full knowledge and quality of what we know today to be the right thing to do, not what the county did 20-plus, 25 years ago.
We, we certainly understand that perspect, perspective, but as I indicated, you know, with the existing Class II bike trail there, that was the connection we made. And that trail ends at the end of the Dockweiler extension. We can certainly go back and take a look at the road with and see if a Class I could be added.
I think it would be appropriate to look at it, since it's, it's our purview, how we do that. And even if it's, it's to have it up on the adjacent, in a, and widened sidewalk, it would be appropriate to try and look at that.
We'll certainly take a look at that.
And if we could get somebody up that can talk about trees along the road. I still haven't gotten my answer from staff. I don't know if that's a planner, or if it's somebody from Public Works.
Tree dude.
The tree dude. And, and just so the city manager and, and planning director know what I'm looking for, I'm looking to see that the lighting and the trees, when you look up the road, not necessarily what the college did, but what we're doing, is that you've created downlighting on a road that's sitting up on top of a ridgeline, and that you're buffering it with mass plantings, and you're creating low light. Because you're, you're creating a beacon on top of an Old Town, and there's no way around that. And I know what it looks like. I mean, I've worked on Creekview Park. I, I know what it looks like from below. And there's the ability right now, today, to make the decision to do this better, to, to make the trail better. You, you haven't built anything. You have the ability to smudge a little bit to create a lighting scenario and a tree planting scenario that buffers that roadway and buffers those homes all the way around. And you really do have a 360 all the way around this. So, you're, you're inputting something into the center of the city. Very important that every bit of talent, every bit of knowledge, and everybody a bit of creativity that you have goes into this. You've done a wonderful job planning and working with the school. I'm so proud of it. But these little details are going to be the difference between people loving it and being annoyed. So, you have something to say there, Wayne?
Well, you called up. I was hoping I could answer your question regarding the, the street trees. But first, good evening, Mayor Ferry and members of the council. In address, in, in, in answer to addressing your oaks on the street trees, typically urban forestry requires a minimum spacing of 30 to 40 feet. You heard the applicant this evening mention 40 feet. Usually, we like to leave that as a maximum. We do have APWA standards that we have to work with, with vaults and fire hydrants and streetlights that require trees to be planted so far apart. But we can definitely work with the applicant to try and push the trees a little bit further to, or closer together and, without canopy disruption.
Okay, I have a, all right. So your canopies, you're, you're expecting you're going to plant large street trees. Your canopies are going to grow together. What about planting maybe sea anothus or raffiolepsis or something below? So you're creating hedges that will get up to four or five feet along the outside edges. So when you're looking up, you basically see green and you're not looking at cars.
I'm sure that urban forestry staff can work with planning staff and their landscape contractors, and it all depends upon the type of parkway that's being proposed. If it's going to be a turf parkway with trees, then we, we would have to change that and obviously change that turf into plants. And we can definitely continue to incorporate the street trees in with landscaping below them. That's definitely not a problem.
Nothing to mow if you do it this way, but a whole lot of buffering from, from light and sound. So, I, I would really like to make a recommendation that you, you look at the, if you have to go down below and stand and look up at it, to think about what the impact of that is, and think about how you're planning. You can't use a standard streetscape plan here and have it work. It won't. It will not do the job you want it to do. And I hope I've been clear. Are we clear on what I'm talking about? Is there any questions?
I think we add that it's at the approval of the city manager.
I'm fine with that.
He's politically sensitive.
Pretty smart guy.
And know that he better talk to other people before he approves it. So I think we add that. We're good.
And can we work on the trail a little bit more and just take a look at how we can?
Mayor, if I could, I, I think it's clear what you're asking for.
Okay.
The difference between the center points of the trees is, I, I think, pretty easy to resolve. There's a question, when do you want it by? I, it takes, it takes trees a while to grow.
Well, I'm not concerned about the, the time it takes for the trees to grow and the, and the plantings of bushes. I'm just concerned that the plan.
What it looks like.
What it looks like in, in the context of when it's all said and done.
We have, based on comments that we have heard during this process from council members, we've prepared some additional language that requires enhanced landscape plan on this project. And so, we are prepared in the recommendations to, to require an enhanced landscape plan that will address the issues of the, the street itself and the areas alongside the street where you have slopes that have been created to enhance the landscape plan there to the maximum extent possible. There are some limitations we face with the fire district because it is a high-fire hazard area, but we certainly will maximize to the extent that it is possible to do so. In, in the final landscape plan, we will do likewise with the dormitory. And likewise with the, the water tank pad will be created. Obviously, the, the water district does not intend to build the new tank anytime in the immediate future. So you can enhance the landscaping in that area to some extent, but you also have to leave the capability for the tank to be constructed. So we will, we will look at that with the water district, and we will work with the fire district as well in terms of the landscape plans. One comment that I did want to address, just to make really clear, and that was that Councilmember McLean raised the issue of a contoured grading. Unfortunately, with regard to Dockweiler, I think the representative for the college used the term threading the needle in terms of moving that road down along the slopes and addressing the issues of the MWD right-of-way, of the gas lines that exist there, the limitations on the, the grading to meet the slope requirements for the, the, the street categorization that exists. We have 7% slope maximums and so on. And frankly, it is not possible to have contour grading on the street and meet all of the other requirements. So, that, that is an area that we cannot, we have that, um, that is an area that we cannot, uh, we have just not been able to, uh, work out a design, uh, and address all of those other issues without massively changing the road design and, and the grading and potentially taking out a lot more oak trees and, and doing a lot more visual damage, um, to the area. So what we've tried to do is come up with a plan that minimizes the visual damage, the impact, um, and certainly, uh, with the tree planting that we will do, we will maximize the contour appearance by the type of planting that we would design on the street slope. So I did wanna make that absolutely clear because I know and we know, uh, Councilmember McLean has raised this, uh, any number of times with us in terms of contour grading and we're very sensitive to it. But frankly, uh, it just, it was not within the possibility in terms of this area without, uh, creating impacts that would probably be less acceptable to, uh, Councilmember McLean and, and other council members, so.
Well, I, I agree with her. It, it would be preferable, but obviously not. That's just why I think that's important to have the focus on how you landscape. Hopefully you're doing some berming so that you're creating some berming that you can plant that creates some buffering and some naturalization. And I do hope, city manager, you're not using Cobra Lights up on top of that hill.
I don't think he'd ever dare. Councilmember Keller?
Thank you. Move the recommended action. With pleasure.
Second. Um, would you kindly amend that to say with-
Yes, I will state it real quick.
Goes without stating, but yes.
Councilmember Keller's motion was to approve the recommended action with the conditions of, um, landscaping and shielding the road as well as the dormitory, uh, conditioning the screening of the water tanks and minimization of the wine, um, to permeable paving. When necessary, take out the landscape modification and the new language Mr. Rossman brought up, uh, all downlighting, um, to minimize any, uh, lighting for downtown New Hall, uh, to make sure there's an integration of architectural style craftsmanship, um, to make sure that there's canopies developed by oak trees, um, to make sure that we look at the trail, Class 1 versus Class 2 trail to see if there's the ability to have that prior to our second reading. And then a discussion regarding chapel usage, uh, for appropriate things.
That was good, Frank. I'm impressed. That's good.
I've learned that if you don't stand it up front, two years later, we sit around, look at each other, what do we mean?
There's just two more things.
Two more. I'm sorry. What did I leave out?
That's okay. Um, to make sure that they look at the, the width of the median on the new Dockweiler so that it will, there will be less impact on the old Dockweiler. And then to, um, make sure that the grading for the, for the homes, those pads, um, that they create a buffer right away for the homeowners that will have to look at it.
Correct.
Councilmember Fer, I think there was one other thing unless I missed what you said.
Sorry.
The, uh, removing the, uh, 10% for landscaping is part of the line.
Correct, to take out the landscape modification of 10%. With that, we have a motion and a second. This is Madam Clerk.
Mayor for Tim West?
Aye.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember Keller?
Yes.
And Mayor Ferry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll recess and reconvene in 10 minutes at 8:40.
Thank you, Mayor.